After seven o'clock exactly. Let's call a meeting order. There, I hit the gavel. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, can we have a roll call of the board members, please?
Agustinelli?
Here.
Robertson?
Here.
Klein?
Here.
Racine?
Here.
Yuli?
Here.
Fudge?
Here.
DeGud?
Here.
Next up on the agenda, is there anyone who would like to make public comment tonight? Please step up to the podium and say a piece. All right, we'll move on from that to review and approval of the agenda and statement of any conflicts of interest.
I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda.
Support.
Motion by Agustinelli, support by Fudge. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same. Motion passes. We'll move on to review of the minutes from our August 13th, 2025 meeting.
Chris, I have a question or comment on page three. Toward the top, it mentions that we moved and approved an application, and it says, "Subject to the following conditions, 1 through 4," but there's five conditions. And I don't remember it, I don't have the report anymore to look, the PD report that was referred to there, to look back to. Maybe it had four, and then at the meeting, we added a fifth?
Yes, we did, we added the fifth.
So there ought to be reference to, "Subject to the following conditions, 1 through 4," and condition five, whatever wording you...
Yes, I probably looked back at the tape on that, but I think it, I think it was kind of mentioned that way.
That's what I thought.
1 through 4 is indicated in the PD report, and condition 5 as amended.
As added.
Or as added.
Whatever language you decide, but that covers it. With that change, I'd make a motion, we approve the minutes as amended.
Support.
Motion by Racine, support by Robertson. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same. Motion passes. All right, it looked like we had a couple of pieces of correspondence today.
We have received a email regarding the High Tops Site Plan Review Application. And then also today, we received in the mail, a letter from a resident at Creekside Drive regarding about the Creekside Apartments Conceptual Review.
You also have on your desk a map that will be used in the discussion on item 7A.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to reports. Anything from the Township Board, Molly?
Just two things. We adopted the capital improvement program for the plan, so that's good. And then we, the board passed a resolution asking for a speed study on Lefraneer. Believe it or not, the speed limit on Lefraneer currently is 55 miles an hour with all of that development that we've had up there, and so we're asking them to review that and maybe lower that speed limit. So that's it.
Any major changes to the CIP, or pretty much?
Just, we had some discussion, but, you know, not a lot, so.
Okay, great. How about any Planning Commission members, zoning boards of appeal?
Our meeting is tomorrow.
Okay. Parks and Recreation hasn't met since our last Planning Commission meeting. And Joint Planning Commission.
Ditto for us. We've not met since the last Planning Commission meeting, and we'll be meeting probably in about another month and a half.
Next item is staff report.
Not much. We just actually, in relation to parks, just met with the Mountain Bike Subcommittee just before this. We'll bring some of that information to the next Parks meeting.
Oh, I look forward to that. All right, I guess we'll move on to unfinished business and start off with item A, South Airport Road Corridor Plan Follow-Up.
This is, I just want to do a quick verbal update, but our next step in this process is to kind of do a little focus study on the Logan's Landing area. So we are right now in the process of scheduling that meeting. Probably is going to happen, probably not until October at the earliest, trying to get various stakeholders, such as the Road Commission, Tart Trails, County Parks, and so forth, to kind of at least study that initial area along the corridor and from there to see how that works and see how some of those issues can be coordinated and addressed in terms of the different interest groups in that particular area. And then should that be successful and work forward, we'll use that as a way to see about how we're going to structure an overall corridor plan concept and eventually present that as a, as a proposal for the actual, how the plan would be done. So just wanted to kind of give you that update.
Will you be inviting the businesses that are along there on both sides of Airport Road into this meeting? Or when will they have time to?
At this point, it was just kind of the main stakeholders from like the private, or excuse me, the public sector, just to, because of the nature of that area along there. And from that, we were going to kind of figure out what would be the approach to, to address some of that. But if we're, if there's anything that's going to create any type of a plan or policy or anything like that, including anything amending township plans or policies or zoning, we would definitely do a public process. At this point, I just see it more or less just kind of an informational discussion.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thanks for that report. We'll move on then to our next item of unfinished business. Item B, Airport Gateway District Concept Follow-Up.
So at the last study session, we talked about this concept of an airport gateway district, and I did provide some information that gathered, provided that at the last meeting, so hopefully you've had some time to review it. Did want to kind of maybe go over some of that information and not necessarily get into a lot of detail, but just maybe kind of discuss what, or some of the findings from our, our review of that information. You know, looking at the future land use maps, you know, basically looking at Garfield Township, which has the high density residential. When we look at East Bay Township, it's regional commercial, which is a little bit more extensive. And it looks to be a larger area than what we have anticipated for that particular corner. Looking at the zoning, so our zoning is a little bit of a mix with primarily residential. In, in the case of East Bay Township, that corner, that area that they have is neighborhood commercial, which is a lower intensity type of commercial district that provided you with kind of some of the uses that would be permitted in that particular area. Incidentally, hotels, motels are permitted there as a special use. Not to say that that's being proposed there, but just to kind of give you some idea of what some of the uses that are permitted there. Did also include for your information, the site plan that is currently under construction by West Wing. They're building the three apartment buildings on the property towards the back end of that property that you see on the corridor. There's conceptual for some commercial buildings. From my understanding, those are not underway yet or planned to be underway anytime soon. Those are looking maybe farther out. But it does kind of give you an idea of some of the lane use pattern there that could potentially be built out specifically on that particular corner.
John, am I reading their zoning map correctly? That everything south of South Airport, well, not quite everything, but much of what is south of South Airport and east of Town Line and west of Three Mile is residential high density?
In the zoning for East Bay?
I'm sorry, master plan. I read the title wrong. Future land use map expert that you guys provided?
Yes.
And that's, that's interesting because that's juxtapose, our side of Town Line is all rural residential. Or no, agricultural.
Yeah, and a lot of on the, our side is because of the wetlands and also because of the, the large conservation easement that covers that properties. So I don't see that being, I mean, it pretty much is locked up on the town, on the Garfield side. I do know there is a development that's under review right now at the township off of Three Mile. They have some of the same constraints when you look at either wetland, wetlands or, you know, wetland soils and that type of thing through that area. So they do have some of the challenges to actually developing in that particular area. But yeah, you're right, that's what it's planned for.
And the hash areas that need to create protection, so it looks like they're doing that all around their protected area.
Overall, they're much more higher intensity uses compared to what we have planned. With the exception of maybe our, the industrial area to the farther west of the subject area that we're looking at.
It suggests to me that whatever we might do regarding an airport district isn't impactful to, may not be as impactful considering the densities that are anticipated in East Bay Township.
Yeah, you're correct. Also, it's kind of interesting, I'm not really familiar with the district, but if you look at their zoning map, you'll see that most of that area is manufactured home community, which I did look at that district. It does allow for a lot of other types of uses that that, if you look on their, I included it in there for you in terms of multifamily dwellings, single family dwellings, two family dwellings, all those in there. So why that title is in there, I think what it is, is intended to allow for a lot of residential uses, but also in addition to that manufactured housing communities. But that would align to some of the higher density residential that they expect in that area. Did provide some information there that we received from Wayne and Rob regarding their concepts. They also provided some images of that area, on the ground images along South Airport Road and Town Line Road. Moving on, there's no other questions or comments. Kind of the next part, trying to look at some other studies or plans that were done in other areas around the country that kind of have the same form of this idea of this kind of gateway district. Trying to look at something that was more of scale to Traverse City, it's a little bit difficult, but did find some. A lot of them, what I found are kind of like these larger airports that really kind of use it as a promotional piece in terms of tourism and that type of thing. Also finding a lot that more focused on economic development in terms of dealing with logistics and maybe the non-passenger portions of airports, so see a lot of that. These, I found these three studies are kind of all, they're varying degrees, but there was one done for this airport in Gainesville, Florida, kind of creating a gateway area. It was actually just a, a study. It doesn't necessarily have particular structure in terms of implementation of zoning and so forth, but does provide some recommendations for that, kind of developing that area around the airport for economic development, infrastructure, talks about place making and so forth. There was, I did, was reading, and I thought, the scale of it is different is this one that's in North Carolina at the Charlotte Douglas International Airport. Certainly the scale is far beyond anything that we would be looking at. This is about a, looks to be about a 90-acre area. But I thought kind of the character of what they were looking at is something that's probably more in tune to what might be considered for this area in terms of it has office spaces, retail areas, has a couple hotels. And it's, it's a, it's property actually owned by the airport, and they're actually looking for a proposal to actually have a development built on that site that kind of fits. And that was, the image that's provided there was actually what the development company was proposing to the airport. The last example is one, it's, it's, it's a non-commercial airport, but it's a, has an innovation district master plan. And it does provide some planned areas for that. It talks about some of the mixed-use compact development there in terms of providing options for people in that area that, that live in that area, that work in that area in, in close proximity to the airport. I think that was pretty much it. Now, there, these are just ones that were really focused on plans. I did find some information related to some zoning related to airport, but I just thought at this point, I didn't really want to kind of get too much into the weeds on that. Not a lot different in terms of the zoning, other than, or related to airports, other than there might just be uses listed in there that help support the activities that are going on in the airport. I don't know if anybody had any comments or questions or anything about the materials.
What are your thinking next steps are?
Well, I think at this point, if this is something that is wanting to pursue, in order to really have any type of development altered here other than multifamily residential, the process really has to look at amending the master plan. I, I don't think there's the ability to use the current designation there beyond something in a, you know, higher density residential form. So I think if there's something, if this is a route that the Planning Commission wants to go down, I think it would be establishing a process to amend the master plan. In looking at our master plan, one of the things that we did in the new master plan is identify some areas with mixed use, the mixed use center, mixed use neighborhood. I think on, if we were to wonder what we would consider in that process, I would, I would think it would be something more on the scale of a, a mixed use neighborhood, only because I really see that the airport is really the key center of this area and that this component, which is roughly, you know, we're talking about 12 acres, is really a subset of that larger development focused around the, the airport. So I don't see it as something that's going to be a center into itself. It's really kind of part of a larger center. Also because we've talked about the traffic in that area and knowing the potential for congestion and so forth, we talked about, you know, if there were to be uses here that aren't residential, that they be non-auto oriented. In other words, there wouldn't be things like gas stations or drive-throughs or that type of thing. It'd be more of a, uses that would kind of not have that intensity, that would draw people from other areas into this area. It's really about thinking those uses that really support the, the airport. So I think something to be considered would be the development of a mixed use neighborhood designation within the master plan. Typically, how those are all laid out in the master plan is that there's usually kind of an overview, a paragraph that kind of describes what that mixed use configuration is like, and then maybe some guiding principles. For instance, we talked about the importance of access management in this area. You know, that certainly the access to Town Line is, is critical. Those types of, you know, we talked about pedestrian connections, again, non-auto intensive uses. Those would be all the design principles that could be incorporated into that. I think there's a real opportunity to look at these sites with a certain character and identity. And one of the things we were just talking about this afternoon, because tomorrow is a ribbon cutting for the Housing Commission project there on Lefraneer Road. And I was remembering when we were having those initial discussions about that concept. And if you recall, initially, there was this idea of mixing the beta bus garage with some housing, and they initially had the garage more up where the housing is going currently. That was where the garage was supposed to be, and the housing was going to be on the corner of Lefraneer and Hammond. And I remember as there was some conceptual review discussions here, it kind of flipped that. And even then, the layout, it didn't really have a very, it wasn't something you could really get excited about. And it's just looked like, okay, here was a, a bus garage and here were some apartments. But I think once that group got together and they did some design to it, and that's when it really kind of changed and looked like it was something that could really fit into that area. One of the things they did is, okay, they had the housing, the apartments to the north side, but they also had around a courtyard. They also had this kind of looped drive around there where the southern part of that loop was going to be stripped with habitat for humanity homes, single family homes that backed up to the woods. There was also some, a little node there that included some commercial and childcare center, and then alongside the transfer center that's there, that's laid out there. And then between those, there's trails connected, sidewalks, and so forth. And I think once that plan was laid out, then you could get this concept of what is really going to be developed there. And it's changed a little bit, but for the most part, that concept was laid out in a way that, you know, you could, you could say, okay, this does make sense. And I think we're seeing that as it's being built out, that this does kind of fit into that area because it was well-designed. I think that's really what's, would probably best benefit this area here. Now, I know it's a little bit different because there are multiple parcels, there's still some residential homes in this area, but nonetheless, having a plan that really is, lays out kind of how those uses can mix together, still recognizing some of the existing ones. I think that would, those types of concepts are what we would want to see in terms of implementing any type of an amendment to the land use plan, or to the master plan that would be in that, that designation for that mixed use neighborhood. So I think that would kind of be the next step if you wanted to pursue this.
Molly?
So how far west would you go? That little 12-acre site pretty much takes care of where the proposed hotel is, and then there are some homes on that corner. How far west into that more industrial area?
Yeah, I would, I would stop at Astro Place. That would, I would leave that industrial area there because it's, it's well-established. They have some businesses there.
I think it's an industrial plat from, yeah. Predates the zoning.
I don't know if that is part, is that part of the plat?
Ah, that's a good question. Is this one?
That 3275?
What does it mean to be an industrial plat?
It's a subdivision. So it's planted, okay, so that's meats and bounds.
This was meats and bounds, this is a plat.
Yeah, it's the airport industrial park lots, nine and 10. So just like a subdivision where you have single family homes, this was a subdivision for industrial development. So that's really hard to, to alter that.
To undo.
Yeah, you really can't.
The plats are restricted in the same way that a plat is restricted for residential.
Yeah. Apparently Astro Place is meats and bounds.
Yeah. You know, maybe that one could be considered. I, you know, I think one of the thoughts in there, I think it's, if it's a well-established industrial area and there's kind of already a, a line there that kind of goes farther back to the south, I would say that might be a, a really good boundary, but that, I don't know.
My only curiosity would be if you guys would perhaps consider looking into the restrictions on the plat in terms of what the plat allows, and if making it part of our neighborhood, or whatever we're choosing to call it, if there's inconsistencies between what the plat might allow and what the, the current zoning classification allows. And then to consider, they're fairly small and industrial lots, which does, which speaks to, there are many small industrial uses where small manufacturing or small sales of products takes place, and it's important to have. But, you know, as we seek to establish a boundary, I'm hesitant to eliminate that from consideration because it feels, without it, to me, it starts to feel small for a, this neighborhood thing. It starts to feel like we're putting a whole great deal of effort into something that's just not really achieving a airport gateway, but it's achieving a hotel. Because it's just not big enough to be an airport gateway.
I see what you're saying. So is it just to include that in kind of like the, the study area in terms of the idea for that designation? But I, I guess what I'm just wondering, like, what, do you, do you see that industrial area changing or just being included?
Are there, I guess, are there, yeah, I see where you're going. I would be curious to know if there are airport gateway compatible uses that would be compatible with the, also be compatible with the industrial plat. And, and so can we look at that whole neighborhood cohesively? Or in, as we're kind of queuing this up to take a look at it, is, hey, the zoning is entirely consistent with what the plat allows? There's not really much we can do to change and make this part of our gateway? And if that's the case, then we, you know, we don't, we don't look at that area. John?
I agree with you, Chris. It's probably worth looking at, and, and we can't act on it tonight because we don't know what the answer's going to be. If the answer is, it's, should stay industrial, which personally, I'm kind of inclined to think because we don't have a surplus of industrial property in the, in the township, for the same reason, then I would think we probably, nice try, but we maybe not pursue the gateway idea. It's too small of an area. It's, it's, we got wetlands to the south, and if it's hemmed in by the industrial, there's just not enough room for a so-called gateway and a humongous planning action for that small piece of property. And then maybe we just look at tweaking the master plan so if we choose to allow a hotel, which I for one think probably makes some sense, but I don't know that we need to get very drastic about looking at larger areas and doing more than that. We're still houses there. So the, the idea of maybe a mixed use neighborhood, to me, makes a little bit of sense, even though we haven't created it yet. And a hotel might be part of that mixed use.
So we're kind of looking at two different ways of going about the same thing, right? Whether we call it a gateway, airport gateway, or whether we call it a mixed use development area? I guess is it, I don't want to say better, for the township to be looking at it as, because we're only doing 12 acres as a mixed use development area? Because then we can maybe assimilate some of the industrial, or maybe it blends better, or gives us enough uses, more options for uses? I guess, I'm not sure which, which way. It's, it is kind of two different animals.
Well, one thing you can do is, I mean, like what Chris was talking about, to, let's say, incorporate that industrial subdivision is from the standpoint that, and I don't, you know, I see this side of the airport to be more passenger-oriented, where if there is any freight use or anything like that, I'm pretty sure it's all on the north side. So I don't, like, I don't think it would really benefit to have this maybe incorporated and say, okay, this could be potentially where maybe small logistics operations could go that help to support the airport. But I, that would be, again, probably more on the, the north side where they have the other hangars and the other operations. I know there's some amount, quite... I know there's some amount, quite, some amount of commercial freight that goes through the airport. It's not 100% passengers. And there's obviously the private air, airport part of this airport. But there is some, but I don't think this would probably be a location that would help support that. But just to recognize that as a potential, I was, you know, thinking that maybe it'd be included.
And the airport has lots available or has property available for, maybe you've got a machine shop or you've got something else that you might put into the industrial, but they would put it on the airport property because they have some space available along Airport Road, don't they, that?
They have, they have some right, what's that street?
On the west side.
Yeah, there's one, yeah, right there on the north.
Right Street?
Yeah, Right Street, right there on the, there's a small acreage there. But I think they're probably looking at stuff that's more complimentary to the passenger operations of the, of the airport at that point. Similar to the property that they have around the Costco as well.
That reminds me, looking at the image, were you able to find out anything regarding the north side of Airport Road and whether or not that's restricted?
So in just, in conversation, there are no plans by the airports to improve that, but?
They could.
They could, potentially, yeah. I mean, I don't expect it.
Which is to say, there's no plans today, but five or 10 years from now, they could put a McDonald's this and whatnot. They would not be restricted to do so.
Correct. It's not in any of their plans or under. They do have a plan and they do have a zoning map. And it's not in there, but that certainly could be amended. And just know that they would, in all of their properties there, they maintain ownership. So all those are leased situations. So sometimes that works for development, sometimes that doesn't. It all depends. But there are no plans to change that.
Molly?
So what's the difference between establishing a new district, which is an airport gateway district, and changing the zoning to a mixed-use development on that piece? What's the difference?
Well, I think what we're, what we're just challenged with is, on this particular area, it's all identified as high-density residential. So our zoning doesn't necessarily, if there were to be, if we were to look at changing that, it would be a little bit difficult to, let's say if we did like a conditional rezoning to allow, let's say, a hotel on that property. It might be a little bit difficult for us to justify that based on the master plan. Now, we could, we could maybe look at other factors that apply to that. But that is, that is a potential option to do that.
And the future land use map has other areas that were identified as mixed use. So the potential route could be amend the master plan to include this area. And we have some of the mixed-use neighborhood ones are like 12 acres or smaller. I think the one up on M-72 is about that small. Green Hill was only a few parcels, just kind of that node. So just identifying it in that mixed-use area would probably involve making that designation. And then all the mixed-use areas had descriptions. So we'd describe what that area is. And then it would correspond to kind of the next agenda item discussion, like creating the mixed-use districts, what would make sense in actually creating that. And this would just be another area to apply it to. But that is one potential route to go.
Any more thoughts or questions?
So if there's, you know, what we've been kind of talking about is the idea of amending the master plan to allow for like a mixed-use neighborhood as we were talking about. But if you wanted to look at other options, we could do that as well. For instance, if you wanted to look at something that would, it would probably require some type of amendment around the master plan. I don't know. It seems like we would want to have something that supports the rezoning or any changes to the current zoning, other than multifamily residential. So we don't necessarily have to create a mixed-use district for this. We could look at other options.
So is the next step for this body to say, planning staff, we recommend opening this up, cracking open the master plan relative to the parcels of land along South Airport. Perhaps we say east of Garfield Road. And we want to review this area and reconsider revising the master plan in that area. And maybe we don't know entering into it whether we're revising the master plan to direct it toward a mixed-use neighborhood or an airport district, but that's part of the process of reconsidering it for the master plan. Or is there some other pathway forward?
Why don't we wait to find out what the answer is about the industrial plat and its compatibility with the zoning and all of that? If we decide we're going to leave it as industrial, why do we need a gateway district? We just tweak that little northeast 12 acres somehow.
I hear you, but I'm also hearing John say, whatever we do, we have to make a revision to the master plan before we move forward to tweaking the zoning ordinance. And so I guess, do we have to determine what area we are looking at for the master plan? Or first, or do we just say, we're going to relook at the master plan in this general area? And the answer to the question that you're, you and I are both wondering, John, comes out of that process?
Yeah, I think at this point, all you have to do is if you, if you are, if you want to adjust the planning and zoning for this area, I think at this point, you don't have to come up with your decision on what that is going to be, other than you're going to make some adjustment. And I would say at this point, issue your intent to plan and that notice to adjust the master plan. And we can work on how that actually will work out to whatever the changes are. I guess the bottom line is, is if you're, if you want to accommodate different development than what's in the master plan currently for this particular area, you don't have to come up with the solution, but, or whatever you want to do. But if you want to make some changes, I think that's the first step to do is issue that notice of intent to plan.
And we don't need to lock the area in, even though we've already kind of said, we want you to?
You know, it's basically, we're generally, we're going to just talk about this area in generally through that process. But first thing by law, you have to do is set out that notice of intent.
So John, what does that do in terms of what you were thinking about waiting or not waiting?
I think that's fine. Sounds like that's a preliminary step that has to get taken anyways. And while that's being done, staff can figure out this compatibility between the industrial plat and the zoning. And the answer to that's probably going to inform our decision about, do we expand the area that we're talking about tweaking in the master plan? Or do we leave everything alone except for that northeast 12 acres? I don't know what the answer's going to be yet.
What does everybody else think?
Good idea.
So direct staff to go ahead and start the master plan amendment process.
If, we did have a draft notice at a previous meeting just on hand. We could provide that if you wanted at your next meeting. It would just be a motion to issue that notice of intent.
Okay. So we'll do that in, I guess it'll be two or three weeks.
September 10th.
September 10th?
We can issue it then. And in the meantime, look into that question. And if we want to tweak the wording of that, or if the Planning Commission wants to tweak the wording in the notice of intent to plan. Because once it's, once you make the motion, us issuing it is just administrative at that point. Then we just send it out to the people who need to know. And at that point, then, and we've already started talking about that area anyway. But that would formalize the opening of the master plan.
And what's the range, what's your timeline? I mean, I know when we did the overall master plan, that was an 18-month process. What should we expect in terms of the more focused master plan look that we're talking about doing in terms of timeline?
It can go fairly quickly because we're looking at a very small area. So I don't think you have to, you don't have to spend a lot of time on it because you're not necessarily figuring out the zoning and all that. You're just figuring out generally what are the, what is the character of this area, what type of the uses? There is a notification process that we have to go through. The Township Board has to approve it and so forth. So I would say if we were to start this in September, couple of meetings, it potentially would wrap up by the end of the year. Maybe the first, we'll say the first of the year.
We need to have some amount of public engagement or engagement, especially with the property owners around there and more general engagement on why are we bringing this up? Why are we considering it? There seems to be some merit for considering it. Here's what we're looking at.
I would say this, if we wanted to meet that timeline, we probably will. Knowing that you do not have a study session in November and there's no study session in December, probably want to use maybe some of those meetings potentially, your regular business meetings at the first of the month to maybe do some things. I don't see it as for planning discussion purposes, but if there are notices or hearings or anything that we have to do.
It might actually, that might actually then be tight because we, as I recall, we had good reason to take both of those meetings off of our calendar. It might just push the whole process into next year. But I think, I think we're all, there's consensus to review the notice to plan at the next meeting and we'll, we'll see how it all goes.
Yeah, I think this is, I think this is best approach.
Does staff have any feelings about the property owners besides these guys that have, that own them parcels that want to do the hotel? And we already know that rifle shop man's totally against it. But any of the other owners, have you guys talked to any of them? How are they feeling or you have no idea?
We have no idea. We haven't talked with any of the owners. Or we haven't heard from anybody. We haven't reached out either. So through this process, we definitely would.
Because there's, there's probably more than half of them you haven't talked to then. I mean, the gentleman that came forward with, they own three or four parcels, but that's, they're pretty small. They're probably what, 33% of the whole 12 acres or? So there's still quite a lot. Quite a few other owners to hear from.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so this, this will help bring them into the fold, into everything. Because absolutely, you're absolutely right. We need to hear from them and they need to know what's, what's being discussed. And as a reminder to everyone in the process, that it is a discussion to review the master plan. The decision might be, we like it the way it is and it seems to make sense, so let's keep it the way it is. That's still an outcome that is possible. So there's, there's no guarantee, but at least there seems merit in to looking into it, so.
All right. I'll look forward to that in our next meeting. So with that, we'll move on to new business, which starts us off with Item A, PD 2025-91, Mixed Use Neighborhood District Zoning Plan Map Follow-up.
So we presented at the last study session a mixed-use neighborhood zoning district. And we had mentioned to you that we were also looking at expanding that concept to other areas. A mixed-use suburban district, a mixed-use center, a mixed-use corridor. And so I can kind of maybe describe those in a nutshell, what those mean. In the master plan, we recognized two different types of new future land use designations for these areas that are to provide some flexibility, primarily in how commercial uses, residential uses mix together. And so there was a designation called a mixed-use center, which is, tends to be larger areas where there could be things like, could be shopping centers and so forth that could also include residential, public semi-public uses and so forth. Those were kind of limited, but those are typically areas that have, you know, access from major roads. They have infrastructure, water, sewer and so forth to serve the density of that development. Mixed-use neighborhood was something a little bit more smaller. Those are those, maybe those providing services that really serve residential areas primarily. Those could be areas where you could have like a crossroad type of situation where you have maybe some corner shops or other types of amenities that kind of have a certain character to them, but then also serve, like I said, the residential area around it. So with those, we talked about to implement those was to create some actually mixed-use zoning districts. We have some already. We have one that's, you're familiar with, is the planned shopping center district. That is essentially a mixed-use district. It applies right now to the Cherryland Center. It also applies to the Grand Travis Mall and it applies to the Meyer Store. And those, while it's kind of a planned shopping center, it's kind of for malls. And essentially, we thought that that could, you know, is, provides a lot of different uses that can be done. So we, we've talked about maybe, you know, advancing that to broaden it as opposed to just for the purpose of, for shopping centers, but actually kind of create these, to support these mixed-use centers. So we do already have some type of mixed-use districts to some extent. Obviously, there's also the plan unit development option. But what we were thinking is, we could probably get some of those things that you get out of a plan unit development in a process that's really through a zoning district and not having to go through, because the plan unit developments can be kind of, not necessarily complex in its establishment, but then the management of those is, can be kind of complicated. So we're trying to really get out of that mode and to maybe, if there's a way that we can do it through zoning districts, which are a lot easier to manage. So these districts, obviously, there's intensity, the mixed-use neighborhood, which we talked about at the last meeting. We saw this could be really applied for areas that are maybe currently zoned local commercial or office commercial. These are, this is a district that could work over by Cedar Run Campus, which is the area over Cedar Run and Front Street over there by Munson. The Green Hill area, Silver Lake and Zimmerman. This corridor, Veterans Drive. M-72 West Bay is a little area that we have on 72 near 22 intersection. They're at the north end of the township. That's where the mixed-use neighborhood could easily fit in. It provides some residential mixed in with really low-intensity type of commercial uses. The next ones are the ones you haven't seen before that we've talked about creating. One is, we call it a mixed-use suburban. This would replace, these would be in areas where we allow more general commercial, but we want to avoid some of the auto-oriented uses. This could be applied in, like we're just talking about, the airport gateway area. We also talked about Logan's Landing. For instance, like right now, you could, if you wanted to put a car wash at Logan's Landing, you could do that. It's a, it's a permitted use in that area. That might not be the type of commercial that we want there. Maybe it is, I don't know. But we thought maybe it would be best served to have something less intense. Garfield Road, we have a lot of strip commercial along there from South Airport down to Hammond. It may not be the most intense commercial that we want along that area. It can provide for some retail and other types of uses, but it isn't necessarily going to be a destination shopping corridor. So that's kind of the mixed-use suburban. You have the description in there. We incorporated some, is what we did for all of these. In addition to the purpose statement, we also incorporated some mixed, or some, yes, development principles. So in the case of mixed-use suburban, it would be focuses on non-auto-oriented commercial uses such as, but also include multifamily residential and some institutional uses. Talks about connectivity, building placement and site design or portment signage and lighting. These aren't necessarily development requirements, but do carry, they kind of bridge some of the design principles in the master plan and incorporate it right into the zoning ordinance. But we also do have development standards in there pertaining to things like service drives and parking areas, sidewalks and signs. Those would probably be embedded and altered in other areas of the ordinance, but we just wanted to highlight them here because they would pertain to this particular district.
John, I'm looking at the map that I have in front of me and the one on the wall. Is that current on the wall?
Mostly. I think it doesn't include the most recent one, the Gussel's rezoning, but otherwise is relatively current.
So what you, what you have on your desk is not a zoning district map, it's a zoning plan. So one of the things that we talked about at the last study session was where would we apply these districts if they were to go into place?
But I'm, I guess I'm just looking at, there's so much green on that map and much more yellow.
Because it's more applying the master plan, like as a zoning plan, more correlated to the future land use map than the current. Cause it's more applying the master plan, like as a zoning plan, more correlated to the future land use map than the current zoning.
Right. So if you look, cause we changed that in the future land use map, we changed that area.
But aren't we just looking at the application of these neighborhoods relative to the current zoning plan versus? So I guess, I guess if I understand you correctly, then the, the zoning plan includes changing zoning classifications out, out here.
So it's, yeah, so it is broader than just these districts. Yes.
Okay. I guess to me, it's a little confusing because I just thought we were focusing on.
I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
You know, these, these mixed use areas. I understand what you're looking at here in a broader context.
Right.
But the map is confusing.
Okay, sorry about that. Yeah.
And, cause what I was trying to do.
Yeah.
Was look at, okay, so what changed from commercial, general commercial to what kind of mixed use corridor? And I just gave you my green book, so I don't have my.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, well, we can, we can point that out to you.
I mean, it can all be part of the process of discussion as we move forward.
I think maybe taking this by highlighting more just either the changes or highlighting more of the areas we were focusing on, like the mixed use areas, kind of pull that out of this rather than look at the whole thing.
And I like how you've formatted everything and it's consistent with our old ordinance, or I mean, older and it's our current ordinance. But I'm also curious to know for each classification, what, what thing is a new thing that would be, what use would be a new use that would be allowed in say a mixed use corridor? And what would be a use that would go away in a mixed use corridor from what's otherwise allowed or not allowed in general commercial? Or whatever it used to be?
Yeah, this is probably the, Steve put this together and this kind of shows you the differences of the different districts. So you have the, the local commercial, the office commercial, CG, general commercial, highway commercial and planned shopping center. So those are all the ones that we have currently in place.
And this is adapted from the use chart that's in the current zoning ordinance.
R means by right.
R means by right. S C means essentially by right, but there are some special conditions attached to it. It's standards that have to be met. And then S U P is special use permit.
I thought that, but I couldn't see a, that probably ought to get put down on this somewhere.
Okay.
What do you call it? Key or something?
Yeah, it needs a key right on this page. Sorry about that.
But, so there was, there is some tweaking to it. You know, for instance, what you'll see, a mix in there is like the residential uses that we've listed in there because we're, you know, if you look at the, all of our commercial districts, we do allow actually residential, but it's through the commercial district. Housing development is primarily how it's done. And so that was a component that we provided, at least in the mixed use neighborhood and then the mixed use center area. And those, and again, those other districts wouldn't go away. Probably the one that we were thinking would probably go away is the commercial highway. And really morph into the, the mixed use corridor. Right now, if you go down where we apply commercial highway is primarily along US 31. And there's a mix of commercial highway along with general commercial. We like the commercial highway because it really incorporates a lot of the access management standards that we're trying to accommodate. In that, or required in that particular area, things like shared driveways or cross access easements and arrangements. And a lot of those development principles are built into the commercial highway. Without, why would we only limit that to certain areas along the corridor? I'd say particularly a corridor like US 31 would benefit from a lot of those standards throughout that whole corridor.
I think the other ones would, so yeah, highway commercial kind of most closely correspond to mixed use corridor. The other one would be planned shopping corresponding to mixed use center. And actually the office one, since there's relatively few of them and kind of correlates with local commercial, I think they ended up, at least in an attempt to make a draft of it. It was similar enough to mixed use neighborhood that I think that in this first draft of it also ended up kind of being absorbed by that. But again, this is a draft and a discussion point and.
Well, what thoughts do folks have? John?
One question I have, in these four potential mixed use districts, the maximum height in three out of the four is 35 feet. But in the mixed use corridor, no, I'm sorry, mixed use center, the third one, is 50 feet. And four stories. And when I looked at that, my note to myself was why so high? But I couldn't go back and look at our book because you had my book. So I don't know. Do we allow anything more than 35 feet anywhere in the township now?
Yeah, that's, that standard right there is the planned shopping center district.
They can go up to four stories and 50 feet?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's why.
That's our highest district right there. And that's what, and that's what we originally thought that, that mixed use center was doing. Since it's right now, it's cherry land, grand traverse mall and Meyer. I mean, that's probably the same areas that this would be applied. A little bit different would be, we would probably apply this to the grand traverse crossing. At least an idea.
Hotel or the new hotels?
Is that?
The new hotels in the CG or C8. The Fairfield and the True Hotel. Are they four stories each?
The one next to.
And home.
Well, we do have the requirement that you can exceed the height if you have the setback requirements too. For every foot you exceed your setback, I think that's in the commercial and industrial districts, but I don't really.
Yeah, there's a height exception standard in the.
So long as there's setbacks and they may have used those for those particular ones.
I'm feeling like there's a lot to absorb and understand what changes. You guys have been really in the weeds and now helping us to understand it on an item by item basis is a challenge.
Well, and just know that, that's why we only gave you that mixed use neighborhood district. And you guys said, we want to see it all. Well, you got it all. But here's the deal, like this is, this is just intended to be an initial discussion on this stuff. And to see if this stuff is, is something that we want to, want to do. I do think when I look at our current zoning map, I, you know, we talked about, like I was mentioning earlier, the US 31 corridor that, where we have a lot of the purple, which is our commercial highway district, we think that that has a lot of value to include that in other areas where we might just have general commercial. And there's a couple of reasons why we think it's applicable. One, as I mentioned, it has a lot of access management principles in there. But the other thing too is some of those, those site plans are required to come to the planning commission. And I think because of the intensity of, of that corridor in terms of all the different uses, probably makes sense. So that's just like one of the things that we were kind of thinking of how, how to tweak some of this. But the application of these is, you know, we're not there yet. This is just some ideas of, of how we can allow for flexibility in uses, but also how do we ensure that some of the design principles that we need to see in place to ensure that there's better quality development are applied. So it's kind of a trade-off. We allow for that flexibility and mixing of uses, but at the same time, there's some, there's some higher expectation that these are going to be done in a coordinated manner that work fairly well. So there's that kind of, that trade-off with the, with the developments.
Now, on these other shopping center, we had the cherry land mall and the, and the grand traverse mall and Meyer's was all involved. Now you got two of the three in the mixed, mixed use centers, but you, you took the Meyer out of there and you put that in the mixed use corridor. Was that intentional?
Yeah, we, cause Meyer is kind of odd because it's, it's in the planned shopping center, but it's also a PUD. And so we're like, quite honestly, the, the PUD trumps the planned shopping center. And at this point, I don't even know if it really needs to be into a, in a PUD because of the way it's built out. And I know, I realize it's, it wasn't always that way. But it probably could be done through, you know, like a, a special use permit or something like that. We thought, one of the things we thought when you have retail, get to a certain scale. We, we've kind of created retail as low volume retail, which is 10,000 or less. From 10,000 to 20 or, what was it? 10,000 to 50,000, I think is.
Something like that, yeah.
Is medium volume retail. Then 50,000 square feet and above is high volume retail. And those are typically permitted as permitted uses, but we're thinking big boxes where you're at maybe 80,000 or the Meyer, which is well over 100,000 square feet, probably should be a special use permit to deal with some of that. Particularly the trans, uh, traffic issues and that type of thing. So we're thinking that a lot of that could be probably managed outside of that planned shopping center district. Whether we leave the, I mean, most likely it's going to stay in that PUD.
At least for the time being, yeah. Was that Meyer, it used to be the smaller Meyer and then there was a mall attached it or like a mini mall attached to it?
Yeah, that was like way back in the seventies, it was a different entrance and they had a shoe store and they had. But then they had other buildings out in the parking lot and they had a movie theater.
Bowling alley.
Yeah.
Right. So you had a few different things. I wonder if.
The bowling alley was a different property. That was there way before Meyer, but that was to the south there. But it was, it was several things.
So that's why I think it has that kind of combination planned shopping center and PUD in there.
Yeah, kind of a mix of, it's history, so.
I was just going to say, I think we've heard from staff kind of consistently off and on that PUDs are somewhat problematic sometimes. I think we used to look at it as sort of a panacea, but then they start getting split up and fragmented and the right hand doesn't know what the left hand's doing and the, the next guy that buys it 20 years later doesn't realize that certain things were required in a PUD. So if we can not necessarily eliminate the PUD as a, as a tool in our toolbox, but maybe use it a lot less often and instead have more broad choices among the zoning classifications, mixed use this, mixed use that. That may make a lot of sense.
Yeah, it is, it, they are a little frustrating to manage. Just like you mentioned, particularly a, a big part of it is the change in ownership that happens. For instance, we were dealing with some, some changes over there at the crossings and one of the major property owners didn't even know that they're in this PUD. And if you look at our zoning map, well, they should be R1 residential, but they're not. They're in a PUD. So it's just, it adds and we, it's not like that, those things are codified like the zoning ordinance. Like you can go and look at the district and find the minimum lot size. No, you have to go back to the files and look at the plans and, and all of that. I think they're still good and I think we will apply them on a, on a more limited basis. But what I think we're trying to do, and that's why we're, did this, the mixed use designation and the mix in terms of the master plan and the zoning ordinance, is to kind of take those PUD elements that we want to do. If we want to get really good development, let's put it in a way that makes it much more accessible. Apply those standards and say, yeah, we, we'll provide flexibility in what's permitted here, but there's an expectation that the quality of development is going to be there. So we're trying to incorporate that into the zoning ordinance a little bit.
Could the PUD at the crossings go away possibly? Could any PUD go away if you wanted it to?
There are processes to do that.
Some communities have done that. We would have to figure out, that, that could be very complicated. There's a lot of things that are tied to that PUD.
There'd probably be some legal implications of it. And also PUD as a very dynamic and powerful tool has been used for different things. I think in the case of the crossings and a few other ones, part of it was to preserve land that has become parkland. So we now kind of manage it as just part of a park, but that's also how we acquired several pieces of parkland around the township. I remember finding some of the old, when we've done amendments to these PUDs and seen some of the older original documents for them. That is how we acquired some of the parkland, so. But we have seen examples when we were at the national conference last year. A community rewrote their entire zoning ordinance and got rid of all their PUDs. And they went through it systematically and worked with all the property owners, like this is what you're closest to now. Like they, it's certainly possible. I think that's probably more drastic than what we would look to do. And right now, why we wanted to look at this is right now, we don't really have anything else to put them in without developing some of the mixed use districts. So if we have some and then we have areas to apply them to, then we could look at, is it worth going back to some of those? Or if they want to start amending them, is it worth it to just put them into mixed use districts at that point?
John?
Looking at this map, it looks like along your US 31 corridor, you've got a lot of purples. Which, just the map, a lot of that's red. If, if I own property and it's zone general or commercial general, which is probably as valuable a kind of designation as you can have. Is anybody going to feel like they're getting downzoned if we do something like what you're talking about? Or is that not a concern that would have to be faced?
That's a good question. I, I think the general commercial is, you know, certainly the, the most intensive one. I think the commercial highway is very similar to it. It's just that it has some added standards to it. Cause I don't think you'll be changing, I mean, it, it wouldn't be our intent to alter those uses. It wouldn't be, in other words, it wouldn't, it shouldn't be seen as a downzoning.
Okay. I didn't think that would be your intent, but I was just thinking if I'm a property owner and I see the change in the color, am I going to be afraid that's what somebody's trying to do here? And if it isn't, I guess we need to be real clear about that.
It have, and quite frankly, has the potential to maybe even add. Yeah, we would have to.
Yeah, there's a lot of similarities between highway commercial and general commercial already. Some of it could be in allowing for more mixed use, you still allow all the commercial things, but you just also allow for some other things. Some could be in terms of process, if fewer things are in special use permit. And more just our conditions or at least our site plans are reviewed by plan commission, but you have fewer things as special use permit. But we'd want to engage, if we did this at all, we would want to engage with any property owners. I don't know how often the township has done a township initiated rezoning and we'd be far from doing that at this point anyway. But there, there would be a process to actually engage them if we attempted to do that.
So from a next steps standpoint, would you recommend that we approach it from a map standpoint? And figure out, or do we approach it from a review? The, I think the biggest aspect of what's changed is the, the uses. And some of those uses have changed from a use by right to special conditions or to special use permit. So do we go through each zoning classification change and each use? Or do we go through each use and see how that fits into each of the new types of zoning? So like, do we look at? I don't know.
I think.
Trying to pick one off here then.
I would scale it back and go back just to the mixed use neighborhood. I, I think taking on the mixed use, these other, all four at once is too much. I think the mixed use neighborhood is one that we can really look to see how that applies. And I would start there. And if there's a certain comfort level with that, then we can move towards the next one and so forth. I think that's, I would do a more like in sequential review of these.
Of each different new zone. Okay.
Yeah, because the, the mixed use neighborhood one is, is really, when we look at like this particular corridor on the Veterans Drive corridor that we're seated on right now, it's really trying to mimic what's already there. Where you do have a mix of some single family homes, some of them have been converted into offices. We really don't have retail along this corridor, but potentially maybe could. But it's mostly residential with some low impact, you know, this credit union, that type of thing. So this district is probably the one that's, we want to study first and to see if this could potentially work on a corridor like this.
So that applies to the west front street area, to the Veterans Drive area, to the intersection of Zimmerman and Silver Lake. Is that the three areas?
And then also up at M 72, just west of the bay, the tiny area.
Tiny area, okay. Yep, I see that now. Okay.
Um, it was, there was a chart here. Yep, those four.
Earlier tonight, when we were talking about the airport gateway concept, didn't, didn't you use the term mixed use neighborhood for that corner too? Would that be like a possible fifth area under this mixed use neighborhood or not?
We used a mixed use neighborhood as a future land use designation.
Okay, you didn't mean it for it to be like
Yeah, not the zoning, yeah, yeah, that.
Okay.
The mixed use neighborhood and mixed use center in the future land use designation.
In the master plan?
In the master plan, yeah.
Cause when we did the master plan, we just had the two designations and it was sort of left for future to come up with how that might be applied. And it seems like at least more than two seem preferable. At least on this draft, had that airport gateway area in a mixed use suburban, which was, at least we were describing as general commercial, but without auto oriented uses as like the base of it.
And forgive me, these are all the uses on these three, on these three pages? All the uses that are in the zoning ordinance?
Yes, the five commercial or the, yeah, CLCO.
So that's not all the uses.
It's all in those five districts.
It's all that are in the commercial districts.
Are there any that would be appropriate for consideration that aren't in those districts? That might be appropriate in a mixed use neighborhood?
Ah, potentially.
And, and we don't need to answer that question. I guess my, my thought is just maybe then for our next, our meeting a month from now, we're looking at the mixed use neighborhood. We're looking at, and then maybe just in a, an orderly process, spending, you know, half an hour, 45 minutes going through this list and saying, yeah, we agree with, you know, what you've recommended. And maybe there's a few more uses that you identify in a new table that you'll issue to us next month and advance to that meeting. So that we're looking at not just transference, but also pulling new things in. Again, I don't know if there's anything there, but I hate to have overlooked something just because it wasn't in commercial district.
Yeah.
Does that, does that sound like, is there any modification or thoughts on that approach that anybody else has?
Sounds good.
Okay.
And I just, the other thing, why I think the mixed use neighborhood zoning district is a good one to start with is because we see that the application to particularly the Veterans Drive corridor and the West Front Street area. Like we could see where it could probably alleviate some of the challenges to that. Where we've had some, I know there's a property over on West Front Street where it's flipped a couple of times where it was office and, or what was it? It was
Multi-family.
Multi-family. And then it went to office and now they want to move it back to multi-family. And if we had this type of approach, it wouldn't really matter. They could have done it yesterday.
So I'm wondering too, if we could have an eight and a half by 11 of each of these areas or whatever, whatever you think is appropriate. Not with the intent, I'm thinking, and we can change this, not with the intent to spend our, our time period in our next meeting, looking at every parcel of land that would be in or out or change. But just so when we're looking at these uses, we have the reference of the map to understand our idea of these neighborhoods and what, what these, what these uses would mean to that neighborhood. And then after we've kind of identified all the uses for the mixed use neighborhood, we can go back at a following meeting and really seriously look at whether we have the right parcels moving or not. Does that seem like a good approach?
Are you looking like an existing land use inventory on those corridors? Or like you, you want, when you look at, when you talk about looking at the corridors, do you want to see all the, the different types of uses that are currently there or?
Yeah, I think that's right.
Okay.
We want to see the uses that are there now and then also see what the zoning classification is. So maybe it's two different figures.
Yeah, yeah, that's typical, like existing land use and zoning, current zoning.
Okay.
And then, yeah, we could do that, those, yeah.
Okay.
And again, I'm not suggesting we, we, the map is a tool to go through the list at our next, I'm trying to split it up into action. It's a tool to talk about the list and then we really seriously look at the map at the following meeting. Unless we change our minds at the next meeting.
It's all right.
Just got one question. The blue unassigned mixed use, is that all PUDs? Is that it's a little column A, a little column B, we're not sure where it's going to fall?
Yeah, these were the other areas identified as mixed use in the master plan on the future land use map. Some of these, and in frankly, in my haste of making this map, like some of them are actually PUDs that seem to work well as PUDs. Copper Ridge is the first one that comes to mind where that's got a mix of uses with it. Some, or like Brookside Commons and Oakleaf was kind of similar, or Ashland Park are all part of existing PUDs. The one that we called McCray Hill Base, I think this was one where there is some existing office. Part of it is zoned as office commercial, some of it's zoned as highway commercial. But it's where like North Bay Produce is and M Dot's office kind of right there. So it's less intensive than all the commercial immediately to the north or like the more industrialized commercial up the hill. So it's kind of got its own, but it's like, it's almost the intensity of a neighborhood, but it's on a major state highway. So maybe it still makes sense to apply that as a transition, but it was sort of, yeah, that has kind of got some unique qualities to it. And I think some of the others were just almost warrant kind of some difference. They didn't quite fit in as much. The other one was Olson's Grocery Store is with all the rest of the stuff on like Cedar Run and Front, but is kind of more intense and has more of a mix of uses in it already than anything else in that area. So that could be part of it. It could be kind of its own thing. It's already in a, it's in a PUD anyway, so that's kind of governing it for the foreseeable future. But that is a good question, so.
So I guess I need something a little bit more clear on this.
Yeah.
This, this is a zoning map. This is a future land use permit map. This is a zoning plan. Will this, are you ever, is this zoning ever gonna, is it always just going to be a plan? Or would you actually say that we're going to change this zoning?
This, this you could look at is like a future zoning map.
But we're never going to change, we're not going to come back and change all this stuff. We're not changing all this agriculture land to one family residential in a zoning classification.
We wouldn't initiate it. It's a, it matches the future land use.
Yes.
Yeah.
But it's not going to take the place of that zoning map, never.
No.
No, this is, this would be like, if you were to implement the future land use plan map today and changed all the zoning to fit that, this is what it would look like.
But it's just a plan.
And it's just the concept. Cause it does, it has the mixed use neighborhood districts in here and everything.
Well, then as far as reclassifying them, US 31 highway districts, we're not ever really going to change that zoning that's there now. To, where the question was earlier, if somebody would feel that they were getting down zoned.
That, that would be one area that we would see a potential zoning, only because we have two different commercial districts there that we thought could merge into one, whether, we've always talked that, like right now, if you look at 31, you see purple and red mixed. It should be one or the other, or a singular zoning district along, for commercial uses along there.
I think the plan commission in the past has looked at like, does it make sense to merge CG and CH into each other? And this might be a way to almost do that, but in a slightly different way. So if there's a, and yeah, if we wanted to initiate that, like barring anything, so like a rezoning could either happen if township initiated something, but we would want to engage anyone to do that. But the other way would be a property owner makes an application for a rezoning. Right now, if someone wanted to go from CG to CH on that corridor, we'd look at it and we'd probably just evaluate it based on what it is now. Right now, there is no mixed use district for anyone to ask for. So part of studying this is like even creating something that it could go to at some point.
So it would be like a green light, somebody come to us after we approved this and wanted to change something to, to what this is. And it would, they would go through the process, but we would pretty much follow this because we already set this up. And kind of like what we do with a future land use, we, we've really never turned anybody down that wanted to rezone as long as they're going to what we have.
Correct, yeah.
But we're not changing the zoning.
Yeah. And like hence the application that we're seeing or the concept that we're seeing is we're going to be studying the master plan to review that section and even creating a district that right now, if they applied, there is no district like that. And we at least have some consideration that applying to any of the current ones other than R3, which would match what their future land use is now, would be problematic if they tried to apply for anything else. So that's why we wanted to look at that. It brings a full circle conversation, but it's a very good question.
All right, are we ready to move on? And look forward to talking about this more in our next study session? So next item, new business is item B, PD 2025-92 zoning atlas. Additional information and demonstration.
So this goes back to in June, in late June, John and I attended a session on the Michigan zoning atlas. It was a pilot project through Grand Chaffers County. And they've been working with Michigan Association of Planning. And it's really part of a national movement as well. There is kind of momentum for building some greater understanding for like the general public or developers, builders, to just understand zoning at kind of a high level. And there's sort of specific aims of different groups of people that are kind of aligned. But part of it is also just understanding what's allowed where. The first state to have done this in this national zoning atlas was Connecticut. And I put a quote from the website, from the national website, said Connecticut zoning atlas, released in 2021, revealed 91% of the state's land was zoned for a single family housing or allowed for a single family homing. Well, just 2% allowed for multifamily housing. And that was used by different groups to help for catalyzing some legislative reforms in Connecticut. So Michigan, Michigan Association of Planning has worked with some others to start doing a Michigan zoning atlas. Their first pilot was in Ottawa, Kent and Muskegon. And they found kind of similar, buildings with four or more units are legally allowed on only less than 5% of land. And single family housing, which they claimed was the most expensive type to build, serve with infrastructure, purchase and maintain. That is their quote, is permitted by right on over 80% of residential land. So I think there's, there's sort of this movement to just show these things kind of visually. And the next region they went to is Northwest Michigan and Grand Chaffers County. So we want to at least show this on, this is the, whoops, I wanted to do a, open in a new tab. Let's do open in new tab. This is Michigan zoning atlas's website. They have some information on it. And then the interactive zoning atlas. They used a GIS tool. It's different than our own, but it had some pretty interesting and powerful tools. But I'm going to zoom into Garfield Township. So they have some different ways you can use it. You see, just hovering over, you see some of the different districts. You have ag, you have R1, there's some commercial highway, some of the industrial ones. You can kind of filter it and use it in different ways. So there's, to get to a specific jurisdiction, you can find it. But also they have, show me where people can build. For example, show me where people can build single family homes. That's in a pretty good chunk of the township. Single family homes on small lots, what we might consider starter homes, which I know we've discussed at study sessions before. Something like that. There's a lot more in the city and it also explains what they define as a small lot, a less than a quarter acre, where you can do only single family homes, which for us is probably going to be somewhat similar. Where can I build missing middle housing, which is duplex, triplex or quadplex to be built by right? Where can you build apartments? Where can you build accessory dwelling units? And especially more kind of relevant for the city, but where can you build housing without parking? Or if there's no minimum mandatory parking. Is probably more relevant for like urban areas where they have transit availability. There's also advanced filters. Like you notice ADUs, which we've talked about before and don't really have specifically. They identified a whole bunch of places where it's available. And looking at it, it's the ag district. Because one of these filters is accessory dwelling unit. You can go into different things here. Accessory dwelling unit, is it allowed? Yes, it's allowed. Are there occupancy restrictions? Yes, and this, looking at our zoning, this is that farm employee's house is a listed use in the zoning ordinance. So when someone read our ordinance, that's
That's misleading.
That's what they read and that's, it's, so it's specific. So if you wanted to say, are ADUs allowed with no occupancy restrictions? That looks more like what it is. So it's sort of filtering down to find the specific information.
But it's still not really accurate because the restrictions are different in Traverse City than the restrictions that would be, we really don't allow ADUs except for farm associated ADUs, right?
Correct, correct, yep.
So this is a dangerous
Right.
It can be a misleading tool.
It's one of these where, yeah, the information's there, but if, and you can display it in different ways. But if you don't, you might walk away with the wrong understanding. And I think that is sort of one of the limitations of it.
It'll likely evolve though, right?
Hopefully it will evolve. But part of it shows some of that just complexity. For example, the single family home on small lots of which it looks like in Garfield, there's none, even though I'm thinking, well, there's like traditions, there's some of these other ones. These are planned unit developments. This did not have any planned unit developments on it. And that goes even showing the districts when they show up, yeah, that R1 being on Walmart, there it is. So someone looks at that and they see R1. And that's one of the limitations we saw of it. So PUDs aren't on the map and it sort of limits that understanding. We also have a lot of areas where we have multifamily in PUDs, where it just overlaid under the district, like the TC Housing Commission, Chelsea Park, Liv Arbers, Lafrania Woods, Meadow Valley, formerly known as Oakleaf. So PUDs was one thing that we saw. The other thing that we noted and John made a good point of this at the county meeting is there's sort of this understanding that zoning is a limitation to what can be built. And it certainly is a tool to guide and in many cases, limit what can be built. And I think that's where a lot of the momentum behind this effort is to kind of understand that. Like it's sort of stark seeing like, oh, 95% of land in a state, you can do one thing, but on only 2%, you can do something else. But there's sort of a couple of things. One, zoning is one piece of information. There's also financing. There's also availability of builders and developers. And we've had some we've had some applicants that have come in where we've worked with, we've worked with them to review an application. In some cases, we've reviewed our own zoning ordinance. I'm thinking the one on 3066 North Garfield. We looked at some of the specific standards of a commercial district housing. And sort of took some steps that made sense to account for, yeah, there's a need for housing and there's took some steps that made sense to, uh, account for, yeah, there's a need for housing, and there's people applying for it. That one, and there's a few others, uh, we saw Village at Garfield come in, uh, for an extension, because they haven't started building yet. And thirty sixty-six North Garfield's another one that hasn't started building yet, and I don't want to call out a lot of developers or builders specifically, but there's a lot of reasons that in that case is not zoning, because both of them have approvals. They have their zoning approvals, so there's other limitations besides this. Uh, the other kind of, um, thing is that it is a useful snapshot for a whole region, and that shows that kind of at a ten thousand foot level, but the, uh, decisions are still made at the local and jurisdictional, uh, local jurisdiction level. And the township can get development pressure based on what's going on around it, we were just talking about East Bay has a lot of multifamily planned for on their side, and even what's already starting on Hammond Road, right next to the township's border, Blair has some right on our border, Long Lake has apartments right on Gray Road on the other side of our border, so we get that pressure, but on the other side, it's like, well, we do still have some areas with rural character, so.
So, thanks for presenting this information, it seems like a useful broad brush tool, but I think in terms of us using it to inform anything we're doing, it seems unlikely. The only likelihood I see is that people could look at this and come in here, perhaps misled, based on what you're saying, but, um, yeah, I look forward to learning more about it as the tool might evolve, and if you could keep updating us, uh, over time, as that happens, that'd be great.
I think mostly, uh, we can do that probably through staff report, uh, because the other big kind of caveat is, uh, we, because Michigan Association of Planning is our professional organization, we do know a little bit about this effort, and Grand Chaffers County and MAP put on this, uh, open house, uh, information session for it, but we did not, uh, develop this or have any, uh, part in developing the tool or even supplying the data, like, no one contacted me, it was like, can you zip up a shapefile of the zoning ordinance and, or the zoning, uh, map and send it, like, they did that on their own or found it somehow, so. Yeah, it's a tool that's out there, um, and we could keep you informed, yeah, we, we had no part of it, so.
Understood, okay. John?
Just one question, did, did, uh, what response did you get from the people that were putting on this, this, uh, demonstration? When you pointed out that, uh, whoops, you didn't count PUDs, and we allow multiple housing in PUDs, did they react to that?
It's a work in progress, I suppose, I mean, they didn't really
Yeah, because some places also treat PUD as a rezoning, we do it as a development type, so I don't know if it shows up differently for different jurisdictions.
The other comment they did make is that, you know, we should be, we're moving away from PUDs because they are much more difficult in terms of process to get them, you know, and that we should be more streamlined. But, quite honestly, I think developers that go through the PUD process like it, because it creates a lot of greater flexibility in design than otherwise would be afforded.
There's, there's a limit to the, the limitation here is that they can't process all this data and drill down into all the nuance. Maybe it's something that AI can help them do, but they didn't have funding to pay somebody to reinterpret all of our PUDs and put it in the data, so it's not there, which diminishes the functionality of the tool.
And another thing too, I, when we talk about single-family homes, we have to understand that to develop a single-family home, you can pretty much develop it everywhere, anywhere you want. You, you, you can sink a well and put in a septic system everywhere, it's really kind of hard to put in multifamily. Uh, there's a lot more factors, because you're going at a higher density. You typically are looking for infrastructure support for those types of uses, but that's why in our ag districts, we allow single-family homes, it's, they're pretty much everywhere, because it's easy to cite them, you don't, you just need a, you know, a, a certain size lot and a drain field and a well, and that's it, you're, you're good to go, so it, the ability to apply them all over is why we see them all through our zoning districts. Particularly in our low-density kind of rural areas, so.
Yeah, and even calling it the same thing, it's like, yeah, it's all single-family home, but the like, the point that is trying to be made might be different for a city where oh, we have ninety-five percent of land in the city can only be used for single-family homes, we need to allow for higher density somewhere versus ninety-five percent of land in a more suburban rural is allowed, because half of it's agricultural, and you could put a homestead on a farm, like, that's not the same thing as massive suburban sprawl development, like, but yeah, it looks the same on the map, and you say, where can I build a single-family home? All of this area, so. I agree, there's certain limitations.
Any more questions or thoughts? Well, thank you, Steve.
The only other thing we put in there, um, just as a sort of piece of analysis, we don't have to spend much time on it, but, um, since Connecticut and, uh, Grand Rapids region, we're looking at their, how much land is uh, in each, it was like, well, let's figure out, uh, how much land is in, uh, each of our districts, so we actually calculated that out, uh, GIS is handy, you can just calculate the area, uh, in Sunrise, uh, so forty-seven point, about, almost half the land is zoned as ag. Uh, about twenty percent is zoned as R one, uh, and those are the two biggest by far. The next would be, uh, about four percent, uh, I think is the next, as general industrial, unless you count right of way, uh, which is seven and a half.
So this is based on our zoning, zoning map, or based on the?
Our current zoning map.
Okay, versus taking these percentages from the, uh,
Yeah.
From the MZA tool, okay.
Correct, yeah. So if we use their comparison, again, I just kind of poked a hole in why you would count ag the same way, but using the same way, single-family would be allowed on seventy-four percent of the land, and a multifamily would be allowed on eight point eight percent of the land. So, it is, it does also like kind of feed that perception though, because we've had a lot of multifamily developed uh, in recent, um, uh, years, and I think there's been a lot of sense like, oh, we've got a lot of multifamily, we need to balance it out with some single-family, it's like, well, where we allow multifamily is only eight point eight percent of the land, like, it doesn't actually take up that much space. So it is an interesting perspective, it was an interesting kind of like, uh, nerdy map calculation exercise, which I really enjoyed, so.
Well, thank you for putting that for the, Mom.
Just do a comment, I mean, when you look at this, and, and we've got forty-seven point eight percent in ag, but the perception is, okay, well, that means you got cornfields and stuff like that there. You've got, I don't know what percentage of that has subdivisions sitting on it.
It's got PUDs on it.
Still ag, but it's, it's really residential.
Yep.
Yeah, the Lone Tree PUD is zoned agriculture, Meadow Valley is zoned agriculture, so that's all included in there, that's why it's a little deceiving.
Traditions.
Look at it and think, oh, Garfield Township, look at all that open space, well, it's not.
Yeah.
Not at all. Alright. Well, uh, we'll move on to item number eight, public comment. If our public, very good!
Real quick, my heart goes, goes out to all of you, I just, my head, I've been through these meetings, and I can tell you the dynamics, details, the words, uh, it's just mind-blowing, I walked out having a, have an Advil when we start talking about zoning and how you guys, uh, understand all this, and the changes goes up, I just want to give you
If you could share your, sorry, name and address.
Robert Mead, I'm sorry, yeah, Robert Mead. Um, and, uh, we are the ones, Wayne couldn't be here, we're the ones that are hoping to develop, uh, the hotel in the gateway area over there by the airport. Very quickly, we've acquired more property there, it's going to make you aware of that, so, um, uh, we've just recently put under purchase agreement the property right at the corner, it's a, it's a, it's a dilapidated cabin, we'll be tearing that thing down as soon as we close on that property, try to clean it up a little bit there, but, um, very few homes now that we don't own in that particular chunk of it. And, uh, just real quick, in, no more than a minute, uh, the feedback has been phenomenal since the word has come out, uh, on, on this potential, and wanted to make you aware of that, a lot of calls from local business owners, retail and restaurants that would love to participate in that type of, uh, of an arrangement over there and have a second or third location to, to kind of showcase their brand in, in that area. And then finally, uh, as far, we have talked to some of the folks in that particular area, the only negative feedback really from, and I'm not going to go into names, but there can, the concern from one, one of the major landowners there is really just taxes, and, and if the rezoning is going to impact that, that's, it wasn't about having a hotel in the area, it was more about what impact is that going to have on his particular taxes, so I'm sure they'll have opportunity to talk about those things, but, um, we are very concerned about talking to, uh, to those folks and making sure that they're understanding what we're trying to do and, and, and make it as, as comfortable for them as possible and answer the questions, so. I just wanted to give you those updates, I really also wanted to say thank you for, uh, for the time, I know this is a a commitment you all have, and I sit through these meetings, and, boy oh boy, it's really wonderful that you do spend the time and make these things, make good decisions this way, I know it takes a long time, it's frustrating for us, but you understand why you have to go through it, so thank you so much.
Thank you. Alright, with no other public, we'll move on to other business, and I don't think we have any other business. Uh, we've got a list of items for the next agenda, which includes the youth work special use permit, Lake Point PUD, High Tops, Olson's property rezoning request, that's a new introduction, and then the thirty-three, thirty-three forty-four Cass Road food trucks conceptual review, so we're in an agenda, uh, for that next meeting on the
And also notice of intended plan for
Notice intended plan, thank you, that'll be item F.
And there will also be, uh, a signed application for the former Macy's, so.
Okay.
Now, well, business, I'd make a motion, will you adjourn?
Very good, thank you for that, Mom. Everybody have a good Liberty Weekend.